Good evening, everybody. The first thing I'd like to ask is that everybody put their GoTo on mute, please. As a preliminary matter, this is Wendy Stein-Hilbert, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. John Reagan.
Affirmative.
Ron Brooks. Scott Ren.
Present. I can hear.
Nick Lynch. Steve Chambers.
Present.
Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Adam Menard.
Present.
Staff Assistant Rachel Cressy. Present. DDIS Director Darlene Coyle.
Yes.
Good evening. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020, now called Order at 7:00 PM. The meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda material for this meeting on the town's website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the planning board is convening by remote participation for the public only, although some members of the planning board are physically located in the select needs meeting room in Town Hall. Those members and employees are practicing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's orders. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-312-757-3121 and enter access code 133747477, or the public can join via computer at Gotomeeting.com/join/133747477. The remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Accordingly, those members of the planning board, employees, and members of the public who participate, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair of the Board, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. And remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For response, please wait until the Chair yields a floor to you and say your name before speaking. If you wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. After members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comments follows. We first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only, and the Chair has a list of all public commentators who will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. If technical difficulties arise, Chair suspends meeting while attempts to resolve are made. You'll keep accurate meeting minutes, noting any disconnections and reconnections of members. So the first item on the agenda this evening is applicant Eastland Partners, Inc., requests for site plan approval under Section 3.2.2.1 and 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a two-family dwelling. It's 20 years old, 14 acres, Albert Street, Auburn Mall, now 55 cars. Whoever has just come on to the meeting, could you please mute your microphone? Caller one, you're not muted? Okay. Thank you, everyone. So who is here for Eastland Partners?
Madam Chairman, this is Clay Williams with Eastland Partners, and I also have Stephen O'Connell with Turning Point Engineering.
Okay. And did you want to give us an update?
Yeah, so through the course of the past few meetings that we've been here to discuss these four duplexes, this one, number 28 and 30, had a few outstanding changes that were made. I'll defer to Stephen O'Connell to talk about, you know, how the DPW's comments have been addressed and how the...
Okay, we'll turn it over to Steve then. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Steve, you're okay? Steve, you're really broken up. Okay.
My apologies. I think Brooks just called me. He was having a difficult time getting in. Mr. O'Connell, we can't, we're not hearing you. Mr. O'Connell? Can you hear me? Mr. Williams?
Yeah, it seems like he must be having some trouble with his connection.
It seems like, looks like it's frozen.
Right, yeah. It seems to me he's in his car, maybe on his mobile phone. You know, I guess either way, you know, all the comments that were put forward by the DPW, I think at the last round, it was just a matter of the professional engineer stamp and showing a few grading changes relating to, you know, the site. All those have been addressed. We've incorporated the turnarounds that Mr. Coyle was looking for, and, you know, we feel that after these past few meetings, all these issues have been worked out, and the site plan is, you know, fit and ready for approval by your Board tonight.
I concur. We've read the comments by Graves Engineering, and it appears that they have no further comments on the... But Adam, I was going to say, Adam, did you want to add anything to that?
Just to clarify, the comments from Graves Engineering regarding the subdivision modification, not the duplex, that was a separate...
Oh, my apologies. It doesn't say that on here, but okay. So do you agree, Adam, that everything has been addressed?
Not entirely, no. We have some concerns regarding the utility design, namely the stormwater design being finalized before the site plan's fully approved. We discuss this internally.
Excuse me, Wendy?
With the stormwater. We've got Mr....
Are you, you're on, Mr. Brooks?
...who would like to speak to it.
Madam Chair, Bill Coyle.
Yes, I hear you, Ron. Excuse me, Mr. Brooks?
What is, which one are we talking about right now? I missed it when I couldn't get on.
We're on the first item on the agenda, the Eastland Partners request for site plan approval. Adam was just letting us know that there were some, an outstanding item. Adam, would you please repeat?
Yes, we've got some concerns. We discussed this internally. The utility designs don't seem to be entirely finalized, namely the stormwater design. We've got some concerns about approving it before that's final. Mr. Coyle is available, is here with me at the Town Hall, if you'd like to hear from him, have his comments.
Madam Chair, Bill Coyle, if I could. So this project is also part of a site where they're proposing an infiltration basin for the 40B project, and they do show that proposed detention pond on the plan, but what they don't show is there's a drainage line that cuts immediately behind the property, behind the building, maybe 10, 12 feet, along with an access road and grade changes. And so our concern was that those features aren't shown. They're also cutting the grade immediately behind the structure of the houses by about four feet, and these are on a slab. The slab elevation is 686.67, and the ground in the back is 686, and they're showing immediately behind there, cutting four feet down to 682. So we have some concerns that what's being shown on the 40B project for grade changes is not shown here and will affect the site. In addition, as part of the 40B review, review of the project, VhB had four different comments relative to infiltration basin design, so we want to make sure that what's shown for the proposed detention basin isn't going to negatively affect the building once those comments are addressed. So I think there's too many things right now that could potentially affect this site to approve it at this point. I think they should show these other features as proposed and how they're going to affect this site and the building before we could recommend, DPW could recommend approving it.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Mr. Williams, were you able to get in touch with Mr. O'Connell so that he can...
I'm on.
You're on, Mr. O'Connell?
Yeah, I'm on.
We're still not, we're still unable to understand what you're saying, though.
Can you see that right now?
No.
Hi, Madam Chair, this is Clay Williams. I'm going to see if I can call Steve on my phone and relay that audio through the Zoom, see if that's potentially better.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. O'Connell?
Yes, I'm on.
Yeah, it's still not clear.
We still can't hear you, Steve. I'm on the line. I am on the line. I'm connected. Go ahead and try and pick up my call to your cell, and we'll see if that works.
I'm wasting my fucking time, David.
Is that...
It's a language.
Are you there, Mr. O'Connell? Did he come through, Clay?
I have no idea what's on. Yeah, okay, all right. So you're live, Steve. Everybody, can you hear, can you hear him now? Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I'm having technical difficulties for some reason. I don't know why, but how's this?
That's much better, thank you. Did you have something to add? Were you able to hear what Mr. Coyle had to say?
I did, I did. You know, I, my only comment is, you know, that's the first time we're hearing that information. You know, we prepared revisions based on Mr. Coyle's last round of comments. Everything he suggested into consideration and made all the exact revisions, so, you know, I guess it's a little frustrating, you know, that this is where we are now. If you're, if the Board is looking, you know, to wait for the permitting of the 40B before they're willing to approve this site plan, you know, I think that could be months. I don't know why we couldn't condition approval of the site plan.
Through the Chair, if I could.
Yes.
I actually have sent, I did send an email, I think, regarding the comments from VHB not being addressed yet, but I would be happy to discuss this with Mr. O'Connell offline and see if we can come up with a compromise, because I think you really should be looking at the proposed grades as it relates to the 40B project with the access road and how it's going to affect this building and the grading around it, and potentially make some modifications to how they're designing the access road in and maybe shifting it, but I think that we can probably come up with some resolution, but I do think we do want to see VHB's comments addressed as well as it relates to the infiltration basin, and I would hope that that's not going to be months for them to address those comments. So we can, we can discuss this further, and unfortunately, it's not a simple site plan where it's not going to potentially change. There's a lot of factors involved here when they're building an infiltration basin in the same yard, and that's still under review as part of the 40B project.
Okay. Mr. O'Connell, do you have anything to add?
We're happy to work with Mr. Coyle. You know, we've had success doing that in the past. We're in the process of addressing VHB's review comments, but, you know, typically with a 40B, you get comprehensive permit approval from the ZBA, but those really aren't final engineering plans. I guess I would say is that in this situation, you know, we'll do everything we can to finalize engineering-related matters as they affect this site in conjunction with the 40B. So we'll, we'll work offline with Mr. Coyle and report back to the Board as soon as possible.
Okay, then I would suggest that we make a motion to continue the hearing to the July 21st, and we'll go from there if something comes up, and that wouldn't be advantageous, then we could move it off to the August meeting at that point, but I think that might give you plenty of time to address the outstanding items.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds fine.
Through the Chair, Wendy, I do have a question.
Sure, Mr. Reagan.
What does it mean to modify existing sewer services for proposed connections? What are you doing?
The sewer services that were put in place during the subdivision road construction were assuming a different house location, so they'll just have to be cut back to the exact length necessary to change the angle of the sewer service going to the currently proposed dwelling location.
Is there any idea how sharp the angle's going to be?
The sewer lines coming off of the sewer main in the street are actually as-built locations as they were constructed, and the proposed locations are in dark black lines. We've got a clean out there. They look like they'll be less than 45 degrees.
Your plan doesn't really show how it connects to the street. It kind of dead ends there, the, where your arrows go to, to modify them. It doesn't show the connection in the street.
The light gray lines are the existing sewer lines.
Okay. All right.
Is that it, John?
Yep.
Does anyone else have any comments from the Board? Hearing none. Thank you. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to continue to July 21st.
Scott Ren will make the motion to continue this matter to the 21st of July.
Scott Ren makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Brooks has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Reagan? Mr. Reagan?
I'm sorry, aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
And Wendy Stein-Hilbert, aye. It is a vote. We'll see you again on the 21st of July.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. We'll see you guys in a month.
Thank you. All right, so the, Adam, the subdivision modification, the reserve at Ashworth Hill, I didn't realize that those comments from Graves pertain to that, so is there anything we need to do on that, other than just review them, realize there's no further comments?
There's no further comments on that. Graves, Graves did the review, and all comments were answered. The DPW engineering deferred to the purveyor, so I believe it's all set on our end. Does the Board have any questions or comments?
Mr. Reagan, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I do not.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Chambers?
No.
Mr. Ren?
No comments.
No, I have no comments as well. Okay, so do we need to take any action on that, Adam?
Yes, two actions, that is a minor modification, and to approve the minor modification.
An accepted motion for, to accept these plans with a minor modification?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Brooks makes the motion. Is there a second?
I would ask that we first make the, make a motion to make the determination that it's a minor modification, and then we'll take the vote.
That's what I'm doing, is making minor modifications. That's the first time. So we are voting that it's a minor modification. Correct, Adam?
Correct.
Okay, so Mr. Brooks made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that. Steve Chambers.
Steve Chambers, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Reagan?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye, aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Okay, great. And Stein-Hilbert, aye. It is a vote. So now we make a motion to approve?
Yes, correct, please.
Someone make a motion to approve?
Scott Ren will make the motion, Steve.
Scott Ren has made the motion. Is there a second?
Steve Chambers, second.
Steve Chambers is second. And any further discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Reagan?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Stein-Hilbert, aye. It is a vote. Thank you. The meeting minutes from, oh, actually, let's do the electronic signature, consider provision, Mass General Law, Chapter 110G. Adam, did you want to talk about that?
Sure, this has been on the agenda a couple times now. It's an option by the Board due to the COVID situation, that we can use an electronic signature for certain documents, mainly will be site plan or special permit approval. A and R plans will still need to be signed in ink, in person. Possibly other items may be necessary to sign in person. I am willing to hear back from the registered deeds on our question I had. So the ZBA and the Conservation Commission are using electronic signatures. They were voted on a month or so ago, and it was recorded at the registry that they would be using electronic signatures.
So are they using software similar to like DocuSign or something in that nature?
I think we were just using copies of your signatures and affixing them to whichever document the Board approved.
Oh, okay.
We don't have any particular software that we were looking to throughout this time, especially considering, hopefully, this is a short-term situation. So I don't know the Board's feeling on it, since there are multiple documents we need signed in person. It's up to you if you want to take this route. I know Mr. Lynch isn't here tonight, so he may have his opinions on it. So I kind of leave it in the Board's hands what they like to do.
Does anyone have any thoughts on this?
Hi, dear Wendy, this is Scott Ren. We've kicked this down the road a few times now, just because we haven't had all members present for the past few meetings. Being that it's short-term, and if it'll make things easier, I know that Adam's had a hard time getting us all into the select, to the Town Hall to sign a lot of these decisions, so if it'll make that easier, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I have to agree with you, yeah. Of course, you're still going to have to come in to sign the ANIs and things like that, but this will get the brunt of the documents signed quickly. Correct, Adam?
Correct. It mainly, mainly it's site plan and special permits, checking on a, on a couple other things, but mainly those two.
Okay, so as soon as Adam has the rest of the information that he's looking for, do you think we should wait until he has the rest of that information, and do we want to give authorization and take a vote on it tonight? I defer to the Board and what you'd like to do. Any thoughts?
Wendy, I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Chambers?
Yep, so signatures will be used if we approve in the affirmative on all decisions, and that's the only time? Is that correct?
That's my understanding. Is that correct, Adam?
That's correct. The record of the decision already exists in the meeting minutes, just certain decisions need to be recorded with the registered deed, so that's a formal decision letter I write up.
Okay, I'm willing to vote tonight.
Okay, Mr. Ren?
I'm saying I'm willing to vote tonight.
Okay, Mr. Brooks?
I'm willing to vote tonight.
Okay, and Mr. Reagan?
I'm willing to vote tonight.
Okay, so does someone would like to make a motion that we use electronic signatures for those documents that we can? When the motion has carried in the affirmative, our signatures will appear on those documents.
John Reagan, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Reagan has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, Wendy.
Mr. Brooks has seconded. Any further discussion?
Through the Chair, Wendy, just one thing. I believe you'll need your signatures in ink to record that you're using, maybe using electronic signatures, so there is, there is that one time you'll have to come in and sign in person, you'll have to sign the decision, you're going to use electronic signatures, so.
Okay, understood. Everybody understand that?
Yep.
All right, so we've had a motion, and it's been seconded. I'll do the roll call now. Mr. Reagan?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Wendy Stein-Hilbert, aye. It is a vote. And now entertain a motion for the meeting minutes from June 9th. Anyone?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes for the June 9th meeting.
Okay, Mr. Chambers has made the motion. Is there a second?
Scott Ren, I'll second.
Mr. Ren has seconded. Any further discussion, corrections, deletions? All those in favor? Mr. Reagan?
I can't because I wasn't there.
Okay, Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Wendy Stein-Hilbert, aye. It is a vote. Meeting minutes are accepted as presented. Thank you, Rachel. Great job. And I believe that is it, unless you have anything else to discuss tonight, Adam?
Yeah, there's two items on the agenda. We need to, you'll need to continue the public hearing for my South family and for SCLL Realty.
Okay, I need a motion to continue the Mass Family LLC requesting modification of site plan approval under Section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for parking landscaping and site layout reconfigurations on property located at 54 Faith Avenue. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Wendy.
Mr. Brooks has made the motion. Is there a second?
Steve Chambers, I'll second that.
Mr. Chambers, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Reagan?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Wendy Stein-Hilbert, it is a vote.
Aye.
We need a motion to continue the applicant SVLL Realty LLC, a definitive subdivision plan for a 13 lot single-family home development on property located at 178... We need a motion to continue the applicant SLL Realty LLC definitive subdivision plan for 13 lot single-family home development on property located at 178 Hampton Street and 19 Eaton Ave, map 12 parcel 120. Could someone make a motion to continue that hearing to July 21st?
I'll make that motion, Wendy.
Mr. Brooks made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it, John Regan.
Mr. Regan seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
I'm recused from this matter.
Okay, Wendy Steinheber, aye, it is a vote. Anything else, Adam?
That is all, I don't have anything extra.
Okay, I'll take, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Excuse me one minute, Mr. Williams, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I was wondering if the bond estimate from Graves Engineering was placed at this meeting, is that covered today or now?
Adam?
That was not, I didn't receive it in time to include it in your meeting packets. It has been reviewed by DPW, and they concurred both Graves and DPW on the estimate. I don't want to presume that the board will take action without seeing it ahead of time, but...
Yeah, now that will be addressed at the July 21st meeting as well, Mr. Williams.
Okay, great, and just as a follow-up as well, you know, one of the comments that I heard from one of the board members tonight, you know, I think was just wholly inappropriate and unprofessional, you know, Eastland Partners is a landowner of a few different parcels in town, and we've worked with the town of Auburn for over a year now, and, you know, I'm kind of just disappointed to hear something, you know, vulgar that came from one of your board members tonight, so I just wanted to make that heard for the public record. And, you know, that's all I've got for now, and, you know, we'll see you guys next month for the next meeting.
Well, we appreciate that, Mr. Williams, and I'd just like to say that I understood it to be frustration with the, he was also the member that was having a hard time calling in, and I thought it was frustration more with the logging in in the process than with Eastland Partners, and I'd just like to take this to apologize for that comment, and we'll make sure that we have a discussion in regards to that.
Everybody makes mistakes.
In fact, and these new meetings aren't making it easy for anybody either.
No, they certainly are.
So, have a good week, we'll see you guys in two weeks.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll move, this is Scott Ren.
Mr. Ren has made the motion. Mr. Brooks is second, any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Wendy Steinheber, aye, it is a motion. Good evening, everyone, have a great night, stay cool.